Oh, hang on, a wrong one. There we go. That's better. That's much better. So, welcome, welcome, welcome back to the second part of what generally has turned out to be quite a crazy council meeting. So we're still covering the, well, the panic, the craziness, the oddness that has gone on on Warwickshire County Council. Because it truly was a bizarre meeting, to say the least. So far, we watched yesterday them elect a nineteen year old to run a multi-million pound council. And we were just getting on to the fact that they were now about to vote through, which, again, spoiler, they actually did vote this through. So we'll see how that vote goes down as well. But what is interesting, of course, is the shenanigans that are going to not only go down here in this part of the meeting, but we are also going to watch what can only be described as the the steel chair of politics, as the Conservatives of all groupings, of all political party groupings, come out and decide that, um, oh, hey, we are going to get Warwickshire County Council to declare a climate emergency, which passes. Yeah, things, honestly, if you thought things were wild yesterday and interesting, um, you've yet to really see the true extent of how wild things really got. It is going to be, um, it is honestly going to be a wild ride, a wild, wild ride. So for those of us who weren't with us yesterday, or who might be joining us in a bit, uh, hey, person impersonator, hey, hey? And like I say, let me get, let me get my words out. Good greetings, good evening, and wherever, whenever to all you people watching us this evening, because, oh, my word, um, the TDLR from yesterday is things got a bit weird when they elected a nineteen year old. And one of the phrases that came up yesterday was after it happened, one of the, I believe councillors, I don't know which party they were from, um, turn around and called the chair, uh, going down with the Titanic. Which, not to spoil anything, makes an appearance in this council meeting. Whoever thought you would get a actual appearance from a, the Titanic in this meeting? I am building up all the best parts for you. I am really building up all the best parts for you because things in a moment are about to get pretty weird, to say the least. Oh. So hang on, let's go to this, because this was getting really weird. So this is where we left, roughly where we left off yesterday. So as a reminder, basically what is going down is you are getting all these councillors questioning why on earth? Why on earth Reform need to spend a hundred and fifty K of money that has not been allocated, not been budgeted, not even been secured to spend on these positions? And already, a lot of people are asking questions about this of Reform UK. So at this moment in time, we hadn't seen any Reform people uh, respond to those yet. It looks like that the other political groupings were speaking out and saying what they thought about all this, and they weren't, of course, quite frankly, too happy, shall we say, about, about this. But don't worry, um, you haven't missed the best stuff yet. The best, as they say, is yet to come. So let's get on into this, shall we?
Sufficient in the long term, and that we won't be back here again with a request for another approval in X, X amount of time. Thank you.
councillor Briggs, your, 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 reserved your right to speak.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's important to point out, first of all, that the main reason for the cost rises, and they are substantial, I appreciate that, has been inflation, um, as well, and also, like you say, it was, um,
oh, hold on, so this, so this guy, if you don't know, we've actually done a video about this guy already. Um, this guy is actually the, the guy in charge of education at Warwickshire County Council. This is the, um, this is their guy in charge of education. Um, never been a teacher, never had anything to do with, with education, but of course, in Reform UK's eyes, um, what a perfect, um, you know, what a perfect person to put in charge of this, um, very important position. So he is responding to a question that has just been asked by, by a councillor of, look, we've got a population where depopulation is happening, but schools are being oversubscribed while some villagers that have basically had a depopulation of, of young people that would normally go to these schools no longer exist. Why can't we change, um, some of this stuff? You know, why can't we look at changing catchment areas? Why can't we reexamine that? Which, again, is a fair point, it would be right and far better for this. But, so he's asking this, this question, and I think we're going to get back to um, more on the question of, of political assistance, just so you know, why randomly this question goes in. This is, this is what sometimes happens in council meetings. Councillors will ask a question, and then all of a sudden it will bounce back and forth about who answers what question. So it's not exactly, um, really, it's just, you know, bounces back and forth. It can be a bit confusing, I will say that.
Under the remit of a private finance initiative. So, and we've also added the cost to consider, like school, as a result of the delays, so children have been put in temporary accommodation. But the scheme represents good value for money, it's in a good school. We, we work to the Warwickshire Education Sufficiency Strategy. I've spoken to the officers, uh, they assure me that we look to change supply given demand at any one given time. Obviously, that's a fluid thing, but we try and respond as quickly as we can. Um, when it's open running, the school will manage the scheme themselves, closely monitored by our, our officers, and I think I had a, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of questions fired at me there, but I'm very confident that the final estimated cost can be as accurate as we can currently make it. Obviously, there's going to be market forces that may change that, but I think there's some good people with the best intentions of getting the school up and running, and I'd probably leave it at that. I think I've addressed everything, but if not, I'll email. If you want to email me personally, I'll address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Briggs. And will you be moving the recommendation, councillor Briggs? Councillor Briggs, will you be moving the recommendation?
Yes, I'll be moving the recommendation.
Do we have a second for that?
I second that.
Mr. Briggs, councillor Bannister. So we, we shall, in this event, move to the vote. We shall do it with a show of hands.
All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Recommendation is passed.
Thank you.
I think somehow this has jumped out of order. Just meant discussing at least the political assistance on this, and it's not on that part yet. I think maybe this might have still at point four in the agenda.
Thank you, we are, we are on number four, is that right? Yes, we are on number four. Yeah. Uh, the developer funded scheme, uh, section two, seven, eight. D one, seven, three, six, School Lane Junction with Bowling Green Lane.
This isn't, this isn't what this is.
I remind everyone that speeches are limited to five minutes. Um, I'd like to invite councillor Stephen Shaw to move the recommendation circulated in the report, please.
This has already gone through planning at the district. So is it possible that we can have some guidance, what our remit is today? And what actually is within our gift to decide and not to decide? Because I'm aware that this is section two, seven, eight money that's come about from the district granting a planning permission.
Yeah.
Um, and I will support either the deferment or, or voting against.
Significant changes, including the appointment of two new independent co-opted members. Mr. Martin Burke as the new chair. Martin brings with him extensive experience as an accountant.
Ah, this is the audit and standards committee.
Various audit and risk committees for a number of outside bodies. This is Sandy.
If there's no one else to speak, um, I just want to say good luck to the rest of the, the new audit committee. Um, having served on there with Sarah, we, we certainly had a conversation before Audit and Standards rose for the last time, saying we wondered how many of us were still going to be there. Um, so it's good to see, though, that there is a full committee, and you'll have a lot of fun. It's quite, it's quite taxing, and there's quite a lot to read, but I, I do commend the work that is done by our officers and by the independent members. I particularly, particularly want to thank John Bridgman for his service. Uh, he was incredible, and he was somebody who
Thank you, councillor Bannister. You obviously
Have political assistance.
Ah, here we are.
And of course, in Parliament, they have SPATs, Special Parliamentary.
This is where we were, so he's blocked the promotion.
It would be necessary to set a very high bar for new permanent budget allocations. As I said in my speech proposing councillor Routhouse, the only two things we've seen Reform do since May the first, or SPAT since
We've sort of re-caught up now.
It's meant to silly fuss about flags.
Got out of order for some reason, but that's not my fault.
To propose political assistance. We've seen nothing else. Now, a lot's been said about your manifesto now, um, this leaflet was put out in my division.
Way out of what it's saying here.
Some of you may have seen it. Some of you may have not. It was a Warwick district, um, leaflet. Councillor Finch assures me that this has absolutely no value or meaning at all, because it wasn't a Warwickshire Reform leaflet. And yet, many residents in my area voted for Reform on the basis of what was in this document, and nowhere does it mention political assistance. It talks about free parking in Warwick and Leamington Town centres. Two hours. So we're looking forward to that one. Residents are really looking forward to that one. So perhaps when councillor Finch sums up on this, he might tell us when that's going to happen. But of course, councillor Finch has already told me this leaflet is meaningless because it wasn't a Reform leaflet, and say, no mention of political assistance. Now, I have here the press statement that councillor Finch made to the press. Um, interestingly, councillor Finch doesn't like to speak to the press, he sends out press releases. And councillor Finch.
Oh, boy, does councillor Finch like to send out press releases? He did a, he did a press conference after this, um, where he, he read a statement and then refused to answer questions, right? I, I did a video about this. I'm pretty sure it might have been the video I, I did at six o'clock today, so, so do, do, do correct me if I'm wrong. Or it might be a preview of things to come, but I, I said, honestly, a journalist should just doorstep this guy, like, try and ambush this guy. Like, try and get him, where he was on the way into council offices, and just start, just pepper him with questions. Just start peppering him with questions. Councillor Finch, why do you think it's acceptable to spend a hundred and fifty K on political assistance? Reform UK said you should not be spending, uh, any money whatsoever on, uh, on unelected officials. Which technically, this post they are trying to, which they do, as you'll see in a moment, get through for these political assistance, is a non-political assistant job, which apparently Reform UK are dead set against. At least they were before the election. Now, not so. But one of the things that has come out is that they think, and at least a lot of the opposition councillors are now saying in this, they think that this has been a, a setup to try and get someone a job who is either running for a, a council position and didn't get in. Or this guy has already been pre-selected by Reform, and this is going to be the guy that's going to basically puppet master Finch. So, yeah, a lot of questions that I think a journalist should be, I think, absolutely bombarding um, councillor Finch with. I, I really do think that this child has absolutely no leg to stand on. He is, he is well over his head in this position. And we'll see how long he lasts, what we are, what, one day in? Will he, will he last longer than Liz Truss? Who knows? Uh, Dave W, we all ignore local government and our peril, all that power on fifteen percent of the vote. Perhaps I should have, uh, taken more of an interest in politics, or even applied to be a councillor. But I'm too thin-skinned, honestly. Yeah, well, honestly, this is, this is the thing I, I've said before, and I've brought this up before. If you think political apathy is bad when it comes to a, a national government, right? Local government, it is awful. It is well and truly awful. Remember, most of these Reform people got in because only about thirty percent of people turned up at the last local election. That means that there were like seventy plus percent of people who were registered to vote, did not vote at the last local election. Think about that. Seventy plus percent in these areas did not go out and vote. That is insane. And once again, this is how parties like Reform went. It's how UKIP won back in the day. Because they always ran in elections where they knew there would be low turnout, because they could galvanise their, 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 their voter base, and basically they would just keep on telling them, you've got to go out and vote, 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 go out and vote. That's what they did. Oh. Uh, my ward used to get eighteen percent of the population to vote. Uh, it was a student ward, so they may have voted elsewhere. Yeah, a-again, it's, like I say, I, I'm worried, I'm worried, because obviously next year, uh, I think my hometown is going to end up going Reform. So look forward to next year when we, when we cover, when we cover, um, uh, Barnsley Council's probable turn to Reform. I, I really do fear that is the case. Why? Because last time we had a local council election, the turnout rate was twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent. That is awful. Awful. And one of the things I keep on saying to a, a lot of people here is we need to do something to increase turnout. We need to do something. I, I, I don't know what. I would love to know, quite frankly. As part of the reason why, why I've been doing a lot of the videos on the, uh, on these Reform councils and their absolute failing and their incompetence, because hopefully next time when it comes to these elections, people might look up, well, well, what happened in these, you know, Reform councils? Well, here's my channel, here's an entire list of videos of just how bad these Reform idiots were. Um, I'm W eighty-five, speaking, uh, speaking the truth, keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Uh, Jean, yeah, political assistance. I know, you know what's, you know what's worse about all this? Is they don't need these political assistance, they've already got them in the council. But according to councillor Finch, they're just they're just not, um, they're just not imaginative enough. They're just not imaginative enough. Uh, Leo Sapien, good evening to you. Councillor Jones says it how it is. I, we haven't got there yet. We haven't yet got to the part where they bring out the props of, of the Titanic and the globe. And trust me, I want to get to that point. Um, because apparently this meeting goes a bit crazy. Uh, apparently, we are about to watch this, this council meeting go off the wall. I, I don't know at what point, but I, I was told yesterday things go, go a bit wacky. But anyway, let's get back to this.
Um, said, we can begin to work more effectively to bring back the change we have mandate for. The definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over again and expect different results. For too long, Warwick County Council has remained entrenched in its views about how we should govern. Those views have yielded poor results. For years, the council administration has relied on the corporate policy team to come up with innovative ideas required to shepherd Warwickshire through the crisis we face.
Why isn't he coming up with these ideas?
We found this team to be unable to bring about the change we were elected for. We need a fresh, bold approach to policy creation in Warwickshire. Establishing the political assistant roles will equip the three main political groups with the tools required to find innovative solutions. Now, I'm not sure what innovative solutions councillor Finch thinks is going to come forward from probably a graduate, because that was what we had before. They tended to be young graduates, perhaps a year, two years out of university, not paid very much. And dare I suggest, if our esteemed senior leadership here and the policy unit that already exists cannot find easy solutions to these proposals, dare I say, I doubt very much if a graduate level employment job will be able to do the same. Perhaps you have somebody in mind, councillor Finch, I don't know, but I see no possibility that somebody coming in is suddenly going to be able to solve the problems of the world, which is what you suggest in this press release. And, I mean, how insulting, the comments about the definition of insanity. I don't know what even proposed, made you even think to write those words down, because I think that's insulting to the staff who provide an excellent service here. Trying to find problems to very difficult issues. I'm a school governor. Uh, and I said, I've said it several times at my school, and I said it again last week. The issues of SEND are at government level. Warwickshire cannot solve SEND on its own. It's a government issue. The Labour government have to solve the SEND crisis, the statutory override, et cetera, et cetera. These are not things that we can suddenly in a situation where we have literally, or we nearly owe more money than we've got in reserves. We can't solve that. The government need to solve that. We will be voting against these proposals. We would much rather, as councillor Routhouse said, we'd much rather see this money spent on family workers or more social workers. I'm glad to see the chair is nodding along. I'm glad to see you agree with what I'm saying. Because it makes sense, doesn't it? Why would you put in people to duplicate the work that we already have going on here, when you could actually spend that money? That is not available. This money is not available. There is no money to do this. Money would be need to be found. So perhaps that councillor Finch could also tell us in his summation speech where he proposes to find a hundred and fifty-one thousand that's just hanging about, sitting on a shelf, perhaps in a deposit account that no one's told us about. I don't think so. The scrutiny of this budget.
Yeah, I that just, that, that honestly, that just sums it all up. Like, this, these positions have not been budgeted for, and they are spending a hundred and fifty K on these positions. And as they've already alluded to, they've, the reform already has someone in mind. I think they do. I think whoever they hire is going to be the puppet master of this kid, because he cannot run the council by himself. He, he's got no experience. I know I keep on saying it, but I keep on saying it because it's true. You would just not put a kid like this into this position. Now, there have been before leaders elected this young to the council, but they have not been put in as lead, council leaders or cabinet positions. Because everyone knows they would have no Because everyone knows they would have no chance, no chance, but Reform have done this. And it is only a matter of time. It is only a matter of time before something goes horrifically wrong, either here in Warwickshire or in Leicestershire, where you've got a 19-year-old in charge of child services and a 22-year-old in charge of adult services. Both of them have no experience in that. Genuinely, it, it should be incredibly worrying. It should be incredibly worrying to anyone who lives in those two constituencies. Yeah, he cannot run a local council by himself, nor should be expected to. I couldn't have done it at 19 and I was running about, again, just being a young person, exactly. There's just who? Why on earth would they, they do this? Like, I, I, I still don't get why they've done this. Like, I, I just do not understand why they've done this. And the Conservatives who let this go through, who could have stopped this, who abstained instead, should also be asked, why didn't, why didn't you vote against this? Now, bear in mind, it meant them voting in someone from the Lib Dems. Maybe they didn't want to do that. But those Conservative councillors on Warwickshire Council should be asked a very hard question, like, why did you abstain? Why did you not stop this? I, I think that's a very reasonable question to ask those Conservative councillors. Yeah, I wonder who will be pulling the strings. I'll tell you who will be pulling the strings. It'll be probably someone down in that Reform office down in London pulling the strings that we keep on talking about, that keeps on being mentioned. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if it is someone from that Reform UK office that ends up, uh, getting this position.
Has been going on for years as cuts come relentlessly year after year. And I suspect they will carry on under a Labour government in the same, we had them under a Tory government and dare I say, under a coalition government as well. So there's lots of questions here, councillor Finch. You've been reminded that we have a policy unit here. You've been reminded that there's now a Reform office at the LGA, which will have staff. Certainly the Lib Dem LGA office does research on stuff, so you could be looking there for your support.
Yeah, local government association.
Out of time. So we will be opposing this, I think, rather silly motion. There's, we have not got the money. And if we did, we'd spend it on something much more sensible. Thank you.
Right, so this is where we were last time.
Thank you councillor Bode, we allowed a lex, an extra minute of luck on time there to make, help you complete your point. Um, uh, councillor Drew, please, yes.
Yes, thank you. And again, I'm going to sound like a stuck record echoing councillor Bode. Um, further clarification as to how these posts will be funded would be really, really welcome. Um, you're clear as councillor Bode says that there's no, to quote, no current budgetary provision and that the executive director for resources will somehow identify funding for the, um, post from somewhere.
I love that. Imagine, imagine being employed at the council and suddenly being told, oh yeah, by the way, um, you've got to now find 150k for these positions. Just, just imagine the, the stress of that guy's job today, because I, I, I think that whoever is doing that job in the council deserves an absolute award today or, you know, deserves something of, of some sort of recognition, because that's what he got told today as a result of this council meeting. You've got to find 150k out of nowhere. Money that hadn't been budgeted. Pull it from somewhere and fund these positions. Oh, to be a fly on that wall. Oh, to be a fly on that wall.
So are we envisaging cuts to services? Or can Warwickshire residents, as well as members here, be given some reassurance that the funding will be found either from the tooth fairy or Father Christmas or where? Thank you.
Thank you councillor.
Given how Reform have, have proposed to fund this, it's, it's not beyond the realms of possibility. Not beyond the realms of possibility.
Well, Drew, for the mythical, uh, investigation there. It's very kind. Councillor Jones, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Banister for bringing this, uh, motion forward, especially on his reference to accountability. I think that's very relevant in this. Um, if I'm not mistaken, residents who elected Reform candidates in Warwickshire believe they were electing politicians who they believed could deliver the things that residents truly cared about most. Finally, getting safety for our women and children, for example, maybe, uh, maybe getting that treated seriously. Perhaps bringing an end to identity politics, uh, so they can focus on the important things like fixing the potholes and bringing an end to unelected bureaucrats pulling the strings. So I want to applaud councillor Finch and his cabinet for following through so well on many of those promises so quickly since the election. Um, whilst I really want to focus on that last one about unelected bureaucrats very soon, I promise you that. Uh, it would be remiss of me not to thank him for having the decency to at least stifle his laughter during the cabinet meeting about recommissioning of the domestic abuse counselling service. Or congratulate him on successfully ending identity politics in Warwickshire by chasing engagement-baiting headlines over flag policy. Or his cabinet member responsible for fixing those potholes whose attendance record stood at 29% before today. What a comprehensive and diverse record for us all to judge him on. But the promises he's attempting to make good on today, which
I have to say, uh, this guy who I think, was it councillor Jones? Um, yeah, th- this guy did, did his homework. He is not, he is, he is literally pulled out, pulled out a, a metaphorical gun and just started spraying it across the council chamber directed at Finch, because I'll tell you now, everything he's just said is laid right at this door. He is now in charge of all this, uh, stuff. Why is one of his members who's in charge of fixing all these roles and, and potholes attendance set currently at, like, what was it, 29%? Wha- what's he doing? What, what's, what's his job? What was he elected to do? He's barely been there. He can't make any decisions. And a, a lot of people think, a lot of people think, and I, I generally want to stress this, because I, I've brought this up before, that there's all this complete inactivity that Reform UK aren't doing anything. The instant reaction of a lot of people is, oh, at least they're not doing any damage then. No. That is bad. Right? That is bad. Because they are not there, they are not making decisions. Decisions cannot be made because they are not there. Policy cannot be, be done or brought forward if there is a problem. They are not there because they are needed to rubber stamp decisions and do stuff. And because they are not there, that means important stuff, like fixing potholes, does not get done. So just because when I say, oh yeah, Reform UK aren't doing anything, do not immediately think that, oh, it's okay, no damage is being done then. No, damage is being done. Because they are not doing anything, that means stuff does not get done. Does not get the seal of approval, does not get rubber stamped. So, uh, Jane, uh, usually in councils, of course, these young people are now mentored in, in-house by parties. I know this is the case, uh, in parties, but Reform aren't, aren't a party, uh, that are they? You would normally, of course, not see young people running things, exactly. I, I've brought this before. I have no problem with, with young people generally running for politics. I generally do not have a problem. But the problem is here, they have put young people into very serious positions of power and authority that have zero clue. Zero clue of how to run things. And that's what should be scaring people. If, if you were in Warwickshire, if you were in Warwickshire, I would, I would highly recommend you get a petition going in your area. Um, basically to unseat Finch and to say that he is not suitable for the position and that he should be gotten rid of. I would try and get your, you know, all your political parties, try and get this done as soon as possible. Uh, George Finch will not last six months in the role, genuine prediction. I, I, hey, it's, it's possible. I mean, who knows how long he'll last, but you're right, he might, he might generally not last six months. And then who's, who's in the position? Who's, who takes the role? It doesn't look like anyone else in that Reform lot wanted to take the role to begin with. So who do they, who do they get to put in on this place? It's insane. But I all think they know that the jobs that they've taken on as, as the council is not what they expected. Because I think they all bought into the Kool-Aid fantasy that councillors don't do anything. Because if you asked most people, if you went out into the street and you asked, what does your councillor do? They will say, oh, my councillor does nothing. Or can you describe a, a, what your councillor is like, uh, like the job of a councillor is? They will say nothing. Or because the education of how our local government works, of how local democracy works is just non-existent and it is terrifying. It is terrifying that this stuff is not there. Uh, person, I think although councillors are of course like, uh, CEOs, they come up now with the ideas now to carry up, carry on and carry out, but the reality is that councillor, the councillor is of course, but doing of course, the carrying out, not just ordering. Exactly. Exactly. Uh, I'd say George is of course, uh, the easiest pick out of who they've got because no other councillors are of course fit to be a councillor, never mind lead. At least the young, of course, can be puppeted. Exactly. I think that's, that's why. I think he's there to be puppeted. He is nowhere else in this, quite frankly, except to be, um, except to be puppeted on this. Like generally, I, I think he is just there to be puppeted and to be controlled. And I think whoever this political assistant is, that will be the puppet master. I absolutely think this will be the puppet master. Uh, Dave W, funny, uh, that Reform are of course against 16, 17-year-olds voting, but have no problem with a 19-year-old leader. Exactly. Exactly. Oh, the irony. Maybe someone should ask them. Maybe someone should ask them why they're okay with this, but not, you know, 16 to 17-year-olds voting, which I think is actually quite good. I, I do. My only worry is that 16, 17-year-olds won't actually go out and vote, because again, young people going out and voting is a problem because they do not go out and vote when they should go out and vote. Please. And bear in mind, if we have a few elections where these, you know, 16, 17-year-olds do not go out and vote, at some point, either Reform or the Conservatives will undo this. Because they will turn around and go, ah, you see, the 16 and 17-year-olds aren't even exercising their, their right to vote, so we're going to take it away. After all, they never vote in the first place. Why are they going to care? So please, please go out and vote. It is really important, really important, especially next year at the local council elections. Really important. So important. But anyway, let us get back to this.
Which has become relevant with this proposal is that of the unelected bureaucrats he's now proposing to bring to Shire Hall through the guise of political assistance. Anybody wishing to take a quick scroll through, uh, Reform UK Nuneaton's Facebook page will find a peculiar amount of pre-election campaign time spent chastising this council for compensating some officers with outrageous salaries ranging between a staggering 50, yes, 50,000 and a hundred thousand pounds. In one such post, they state Reform UK will introduce a British-style Doge to audit local councils to stop the waste of money. Now, I could call out councillor Finch for wanting to bring to Warwickshire a Doge experiment which has failed so utterly in the US. Or I could highlight how the lead, uh, how the leaders described hard-working officers who have suffered real terms pay cuts through years of austerity and have provided so much to this council and its dependents, a waste of money. But no, what really gets me
Yeah, I this is something else that you can expect as well. This is something else that is worth bringing up, uh, as a point. These reform people are not going to, um, respect anyone who works for the council at all whatsoever. And we've already seen that. They do not respect these people at all, because as far as these, they are concerned with that ideology, they are. If you work for, if you go and work for the council, it's a mug's game. Like, wh- why, why would you go work, uh, for the council? Wha- what a fool you are, working for, for local government. Even as a, as civil servant. Like, most of these people have a really bad view of, of this type of, of work. And it, and it shows. It shows in the way and the language of how they speak and talk about civil servants. And bear in mind, I think civil servants are the backbone of this country. They do so much work, so much work. And recently, thanks to the Conservatives, they have been unnecessarily politicised. And because that has happened, you are now getting Reform getting away with this, using this type of language, where a couple of years ago, they would never would have, even the Conservatives would have ripped into Reform for saying this about local officers or people who work for the government and civil servants. It would be considered completely unacceptable. But because this has now slipped in, they're now getting away with it even more and more.
About these political assistants councillor Finch wants to bring is that now Reform have had a sniff of power, they are making it so clear to everybody at home that they never cared a jot for the will of their supporters. No to overpaid unelected bureaucrats before the election, but yes, to 150,000 pounds of unfunded spending on political spads now that campaigning is over. Hypocrisy is my word of the day. It's an important for all of us to try and understand why councillor Finch feels these roles are necessary though. Because he says he wants to bring a, quote, "fresh, bold approach to policy creation in Warwickshire", a commendable desire, but I have to wonder why he can't find that, that kind of idea generation from his own benches.
Yep.
Is this proposal an admission that his team don't have what it takes to run this council? Can he not rely on his 22 and a half councillors to turn up good ideas just because they don't turn up to meetings? If it weren't for the fact that his cabinet member responsible for potholes seems to be abstaining on, from meetings on appointed principle at this point, I might have assumed the whole group were intentionally setting him up for failure. But perhaps councillor Finch has learned a sage lesson early in his political career. Don't assume malice where a better explanation might be a lack of commitment and competence. Perhaps this is a reason councillor Finch is willing to pay triple rates for the support staff he feels he needs. Perhaps he thinks his cohort of, don't worry, we promise you won't win, we just need a name on the ballot councillors, aren't pulling their weight. Maybe he thinks the ones who are, who do are making so many schoolboy errors, he is resorting to asking this council for public funds to pay for not just one, but three full-time roles, two of which are surplus to requirements. Maybe he's simply that desperate to finally have someone on his team he thinks will be able to follow instructions. Perhaps he needs a personal, sorry, political assistant to help him perform his functions, tell him what Nigel really wants, put an arm around his shoulder and let the real unelected bureaucrat puppeteer from the shadows. Who can say? I'm simply making observations and sharing my concerns with the class. Suffice to say, out of a disappointment for the way that this motion betrays his own voters' wants, out of the way it appears to signal contempt for fellow councillors and their ability to contribute, out of the duty I have to manage public funds responsibly and out of an acknowledgement that the rep, that the responsibility for strategic direction in a local council level falls upon the shoulders of elected councillors and not those of unelected political appointments, I will be voting against this motion.
Yeah, can I just say, that was good. That was very good. My only note, my only note, please. Please. Learn your speech, just as, as someone who has done, as someone who has done a lot of public speaking, you should not have to look at your notes unless absolutely necessary. And he was constantly down there. He could have really knocked that out of the park if he, if he had not been, been reading off If he, if he had not been, been reading off his iPad. Again, everything he said, I think was absolutely right, absolutely 100% correct. But just as some, as something coming from someone who has done a lot of public speaking, needs to, needs to learn his speech, needs to, needs to learn his speech. Other than that, I, I, I 100% agree with everything. I, I think he's done an absolutely cracking job on that. I think he knocked it out of the park. I think he knocked it out of the park. Oh. Darren's joining us. Good evening. Yeah. He's only doing what Nigel does. He's just asking questions. So I, I think at this point, I think Finch now responds, I think, I, I can't remember. Like I say, unfortunately, the agenda here is being completely knocked out, completely knocked out. So we can't trust this anymore. And use it to click and go back and forth, unfortunately. But there you go. Yeah, exactly. Point to the cue card would have been better, could, would have been better, but great. The content was great. Yeah, exactly. Exactly. If you are going to do something like this, either that or keep it short, keep it short and sweet. Look, you've got, you know, your time to respond. You don't have to use the full time if you don't want to. If you can make your point. When you've got, you know, let's say you've got five minutes and you make it in three minutes, whatever, fine. You don't need to add anything more to it. Just go in and, and you know, blast off at them.
Thank you. Councillor Curtis, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. Councillor Bannister, you said this administration wants to challenge itself intelligently. And you believe in transparency and accountability. I'm just really following on from councillor Sam Jones's comments on lack of attendance and wasting of time really. So following those comments, can we inspect, can we expect in future that portfolio holders will attend overview and scrutiny committee meetings? And to ensure that this administration can be held to account in these very important public fora. Thank you.
Every single Reform council at this moment in time is struggling with that because portfolio holders are not turning up to meetings. Meetings where they have to be there, where they have to make decisions, where they have to do stuff. They are not turning up. And this is a problem. This is a big problem. Because as I said a couple of moments ago, just because I say, oh, Reform aren't doing anything, some people immediately think, oh, that's great. They're not doing anything, right? No, no, that is just as bad in a, in a council like this because they have to run. When you haven't got someone, you know, rubber stamping those approvals, doing that, or doing that stuff, things will just grind to a halt. Sooner or later, decisions have to be made. Stuff has to be, get approval from these councillors. Stuff will go wrong and it will go horribly wrong, horribly wrong when it starts to go out, go wrong. So far, they're all right because it's still early days. But yeah, things are going to go horribly wrong. It's just a question of what's going to go wrong. I have a feeling in Leicester, in, sorry, Leicestershire, that's where it's going to go worse. Because you've got a 19 or 20, 22 year old in charge of adult social care and child services. That's bad. That's very, very bad.
Thanks, your councillor Curtis. Councillor Warwick, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, interesting, interesting proposal to come forward from Reform today for all the reasons that have already been outlined. First and foremost, Conservatives, we will always look investment if it's going to bring a return. But what we need to see is what the return is. And let's be frank, all of our parties use political assistance. So the Liberal Democrat, well, councillor Andrew Millen, leader of the Suffolk Green Group, said, "A political assistant will help councillors fulfil their roles and do the job of being a councillor well." And if you look on the Liberal Democrats toolkit, it actually says on your councillor's guidance page, "It is perfectly legitimate and arguably sensible to appoint a person who is party, a party member, or at least sympathetic to the policies and aims of your group and national policy." So let's not sort of bring into this an element, it's, it's a little hypocritical to me for us to be making these statements when our parties, mine included, actually support this principle and the guidance elsewhere has been along this line. Now, where
They're not criticizing having one, right? He has got the wrong end of the stick. They are not criticizing having one. What they are criticizing is the fact that this is completely unsecured funding, 150k for this position. They already have a council policy unit, a corporate office team to do that. But councillor Finch has turned around and just said, oh, they're completely unimaginative. The local government association now has an office for Reform. They do research for you. Why can't they use that? Instead, they are spending public money, unsecured public money where they do not have the funding, where they've literally got to pull it out of thin air. And as one councillor said, where are they going to get this funding from? The tooth fairy? Father Christmas? That is what is really being talked about here. No one cares about the fact that political assistants do exist in other parties, or that, you know, you can bring in a political assistant if you want to. But the thing is here, Warwickshire Council does not have the money to do so. Why aren't Reform paying for this? That should be the real question. So let's continue with this.
We are struggling is to see where the value to Warwickshire is. Because just to say we're going to spend some money on staff so we don't like it is not a valid argument. What the valid argument is, we're going to spend some money on staff and this is going to be the result. Have we contacted any of these authorities that are using political assistance and gained some guidance as to what the benefits are? Because this council is now hung. We are going to have, as we've seen already, difficult times to negotiate the waters ahead of us. So as a group, we are torn. We are very torn because across the board, we see how this can be. But if we're going to see there's a cost, we need to understand the benefit. So let's be frank, they are used.
Benefit.
Your groups recommend their use, as I've just pointed out there. But we need to know what the benefit to Warwickshire is. And perhaps councillor Finch will be able to outline that when he, when he sums up later on. But this is a difficult one because it's about cost and benefit. That is the balance when you employ anybody, as has already been pointed out. So a tough one for us. But let's note, as has been pointed out, these are quite widely used by other authorities of all colours.
Thank you, councillor Warwick. We have councillor Seraphini, please.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, there's been a lot said in the debate, so I'm not going to try and rehash everything that's been said. I think my concern is, and I'll be really brutally honest here, we're being told that they're needed to help shape ideas, form new ideas. Yet at the start, when councillor Bannister nominated councillor Finch to be leader, he said they hadn't got those ideas yet. So I'm kind of a bit like, is this a chicken and egg scenario? What's going on here? So for me, you know, if we tell our officers, our very good and valued officers, what it is our political direction is, they go off and they try and find solutions to that, whether it be a pothole in your road to, you know, adult social care. As, as others have said, some of these are intractable solutions all local authorities face. We understand that. We know that some of these can only be solved by national resolution, by changing the legislation, by changing how we do things. We understand that. We know that send isn't an answer we can deliver here in Warwickshire. There are things we could do to tweak. There are things that we could do to help, but we're not going to fix the problem here. I mean, if we did, I think, you know, Monica would probably be elevated for Piers Baroness, something rather, you know, because, you know, and Nigel too. And, and, and because the reality is, these are really big issues. And I don't think that the political assistants will be here to do that. I don't think that they will have that knowledge of depth and experience to do that. So for me, my worry is, we're setting these poor people up already with a, with a job that they can't do. Sometimes though, they're used for other things. Sometimes they're used to help answer casework, which we could argue might unfairly advantage the three bigger parties because I get just as much casework as any other councillor, possibly more than some because I'm a town centre councillor. So believe me, I get a lot about rugby town centre. So maybe we should do on, you know, how much town centre you've got. I don't know, am I any joking? But the worry is, you know, people have been, residents have looked at this. And a resident has contacted me and highlighted the bit that says, whilst they are politically restricted, they are allowed to speak to the public with the intention of affecting support for a political party and published material intended to gain support for a political party. So they're not entirely restricted, they're not entirely politically neutral. And obviously for the smaller groups, then we are now at a disadvantage. So I think, you know, there are the two things. One, set your policies. Ask our existing officers. They might give you some surprising answers. The Conservatives set their policies and they gave them the answers for the policies that they had. Set your policies out and ask our officers to give you the answers because you might find they're actually quite clever people. You might find that they're well respected in their fields because we've all found that over the years. You might find that they have some innovative ideas, but they weren't ones that other administrations chose to take. And every administration chooses what it does. Times change. Things we did two years ago might not be fit for now. We all understand that. We all understand that not only is the political
Again, she's, she's doing all right, but this is one of those points where it's just like, you've, you've made your point, you've, you've made your point, you've made a very good point. End it. But no, I, I, I do see a point. She is right. These do, you know, having these political officers does disadvantage smaller parties. And of course, does advantage the larger parties because they are not politically neutral. They are there to, in a way, do PR for that party on that council. Which again, has led a lot of people to say that Reform already know who they are going to put forward for this job. That they already know. And I say, and I've said this before, this is the person who's going to puppet master Finch. Oh, Patrick H, good evening to you as well. As a Warwickshire resident, I'm appalled by you Reform UK's attitude and actions. Putting a 19 year old in charge is suicidal. Yeah. I am honestly, Patrick, my message to you and to anyone else who is from Warwickshire, get out and vote. Good Lord, get out and vote next time. Because over 70% of you did not go out and vote. This is why you've ended up with this. The message needs to be sent. The message needs to be sent. Seriously. So back to this.
landscape moving, but our, our econ, our economy, our geography, everything is changing. So our ideas can change. We have officers that are flexible and able to do that. And I think it's really quite upsetting when officers aren't given that ability to do that and aren't asked to do that. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, councillor Feeny. We have councillor Ruth House, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To my colleague and friend councillor Warwick, this is Warwickshire, not other local authorities. I understand that and I know them and I know some political assistants, but I'm here today representing Warwickshire, representing the division I got elected in. And therefore, that's why I want to talk about Warwickshire and what we do here. In fact, I think if I remember rightly, it was your party that got rid of political assistance in the financial cuts as we went through the years. So, you know, here we, here, here we go again. And to councillor Bannister, I'd, I'd say, yes, let's, you know, this is Warwickshire, let's have a look at things. And I'd be really interested, and it follows on from councillor Feeny really, about the priorities. I've seen councillor Finch, yourself and others in, in the press and the media, coming out with, with the statements, which, you know, a broad, very broad brush priority areas, you know, potholes and send and so on and so forth. Have you sat down with the corporate policy unit here and actually explained that to them? Had a discussion with them of actually about taking forward your particular ideas and where you want to go with that? I'd really like to know in a yes or no way as to whether that's actually happened and whether you've done that. Because one of the processes I go through is to sit down with the corporate policies or the strategic directors even, and have those discussions and actually.
Yeah, though, that's a valid question. We'll see what Finch's response is, but I think it's not going to be good, to be honest. But no, he's, he's a very good point. Why do you need these people when you, why do you need to hire these extra people? When you've already got that entire strategy team, you've got the corporate policy team, you've got your LGA units. Why aren't Reform themselves hiring someone? But I thought that's what that unit down in London was for. Where are the policies? No Reform council has put forward policy, and especially in Warwickshire, all they've done is, oh, something about flags and now they've put forward this to spend 150k of Warwickshire County Council's budget, which is unsecured. And I'll tell you this now, I feel sorry for the people who work in Warwickshire County Council who are responsible for budget allocation because they've been told today, you've got to find 150k out of nowhere. I, I feel sorry for them. I, I really feel sorry for them on that one.
Not just about what's going on here now, but actually about the future, what particular ideas are. You know, we all have ideas. We're not the fountain of all knowledge. Yeah, everybody has a different particular angle on things and may want to go down particular routes and avenues. And therefore, you know, I have an exploration with, with directors, with the staff, working with them, actually to develop those ideas. And most of those have come back up through the budget process and into budgets, which last time around, the Conservatives just chucked in the bin and then picked them up a few months later and brought them back in through the process. Because that's exactly what the, the administration did last time. They came forward with their particular priorities, worked it all up within the, the local authority and then brought forward the corporate plan for adoption and, and going forward in that way. And that's the one, that's the way the process goes. So my advice is really, is sit down with the corporate policy unit and to talk and to talk seriously about what you want to do. I've seen the statements, but you need to flesh those out. You need to actually get down into some of the detail about that and see where that particular goes. Political assistants will not do that because they're not the fountain of all knowledge about those particular things. They can be the errand person, so you can send them off to go and have those discussions. But my suggestion is, is it's the portfolio holders and the leader that should be having those discussions directly with those staff and those staff members at that level to get that strategic fit for a corporate plan coming forward with the key performance indicators and the budget that then follows the particular things.
Yeah, he's exactly right. Why aren't these Reform councillors meeting with these council officers? What, what, what's going on? Like, what, what are they doing? What were they, what were they even elected to do at this point? It, it boggles my mind. It genuinely boggles my mind. But anyway, with that, I'm just going to take a quick break because I need, I need another drink. So we're just going to take a quick comfort break here and we'll be back very soon. I need another drink. So we're just going to take a quick comfort break here and we'll be back very soon. And we're back. So refreshed. But we're getting close now. You can sense we're getting close to the response. This is why I want to hear what they're going to respond with, because that's going to be fun.
The treasurer sent to me years ago here in this place, Jerry, don't worry about the money. Money is an issue, yeah, but don't worry about the money. He says, what is it you want to do? What is it you want to achieve? What is it you want to deliver? What is it that you want for the residents out there that you've got elected for, that you've spoken to your residents about? What is it that you want?
Yep.
And I'll make the money fit if I can. If I can't, I'll explain it to you as to why it can't fit. And then we'll explore and see whether we can find a way to do it. That's the way to do business around here and actually not sort of throw bricks and brats around in the media, actually to sit down. So have you sat down with the corporate policy unit? Have you had those discussions yet? I'd really like to know.
Thank you councillor Routhaus. Councillor Cauter, please.
I'm probably the only member in this room who was actually in this chamber in 1989 when actually this whole issue came up in relation to political assistance. At that time, of course, this council was run on a committee system. And actually, it was very, very important to have people who could actually communicate within groups to make sure there was consistency of policy across the piece. And that was one of the reasons why political assistants were put in place in the early 1990s to actually make the council work better. I think this is an extremely lazy proposal that's come forward today because break-
Okay, that's good. I do like that you've got the old, you know, parliamentarian coming in saying, I was back here in the early 90s, I remember this, this is why we had them. And now he's come out and just go, this is, though what you're doing is incredibly lazy. I think that says it all. Because it should be these councillors, as the guy, Roadhouse, just pointed out, you tell these people what you want to do. You can't just come up with a vague idea. Fix send. If you tell that to a council officer, they will probably laugh in your face. I this is a massive waste of money. I can't wait till Doge, that, sorry, not Doge, their doggle team, the Department of Local Government Efficiency comes to Warwickshire. Because I would love to know what they make of these political assistants. I bet they're just going to ignore them and find some way to excuse that these political assistants are somehow great value for money.
Clearly, the work has not been done. As councillor Routhaus, I think, has very ably said to us, we don't understand how this, this further expenditure of 150,000 pounds is going to relate to the existing structure that we have within the council. We have an important and able workforce that we have at the moment. And are we using them absolutely correctly? Yes, councillor Warwick, other Liberal Democrat groups do have political assistants. They have worked out about how you make the savings to ensure that they are adding that value. This proposal says nothing about that at all. All it is about is about spending some money so we can have a chum in our group. And I think that is not helpful, particularly given the financial state of this council, which is extremely serious. And we're almost a quarter the-
I I don't love it. But I think, and I would be willing to bet, I would be willing to bet Warwickshire County Council has to issue a bankruptcy notice, a section 114 notice. How is Nigel going to explain that? When, you know, this Reform council goes bankrupt? What do they, what do they start saying? What does councillor Finch start saying? When they have to issue that? I am saying it now, I think Warwickshire County Council is going to go be issuing a section 114 notice, which is an official notice that the council has gone bankrupt. I think that's what we're looking at. And hey, Reform are in charge, so it's all on them.
The way through the financial year, and I've seen absolutely no initiative come forward from the Reform group about how we're supposed to be making the savings, how we're, in fact, we're going to balance this budget here. At the moment, this is another, I think, gesture politics, which frankly, I think we have to dismiss.
How long do you give the bankruptcy notice in your opinion? I would say maybe two years. I would say maybe two years. I don't think it's going to happen overnight. I think this is going to happen very slowly but surely. And it is going to happen because of the insane policies or lack of policies, depending on what happens on Warwickshire County Council. I really do. I really do believe that. They are going to do some insane, crazy stuff and it's all going to go a bit wrong. It's all going to go a bit wrong.
Thank you councillor Cauter. Councillor Scott, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have two points to make. The first one in reference to councillor Bannister's speech. I think this is not a fair proposal. It does not apply to all parties. And there will be three parties that these political assistants will not apply to. So that's just a point of reference. My second point is, I've been county councillor as long as councillor Finch. I have worked with the officers, I have found them very understanding, very knowledgeable and very helpful. And I do not think it is a good way to work with them, to insult them in public. So I appeal to you, Reform councillors, to vote against this and actually take the time, which I know lots of you have, to spend time with those officers, to listen to them, to understand their knowledge. I hope you will agree with me.
Yeah, again, valid point. Why aren't you using all these people in the council? Whose job it is? Why aren't you using their knowledge? Why are you having to invent a new position for this? Oh, that's right, they're not imaginative enough. Again, I would love to ask how that came about, why he thinks that. Like, what is his reasoning for that? I don't know, maybe we'll find out in a moment when he gets to respond.
Thank you councillor Scott. Are there any other any other contributions? Councillor Condeco.
I did indicate quite early, and I'm quite keen to say a little bit about this because I've been around unfortunately far too long in these sort of places. I see why you need or want political assistance.
Oh, and there it is, there's the Titanic. There's the Titanic that this guy gifted to the chair. Yeah, he thinks it's going to go that badly. That this chairman is that bad. He's going to go down with it, with the Titanic. I have to say, I love it. I love it. I need to find this guy. I need to find this guy. I honestly do. I want to find out who this guy is. I want to get him on stream. I want to get him on stream. I want to have a chat with this guy. I have to find out. I have to find out. In fact, let's just go back just a little bit.
Political assistants, they have worked out about how you make the savings to nothing about that, so chum in the way from the budgets which-
Thank you, Chair. Their proposal is, I think, appeal to lots of you and their knowledge.
Thank you councillor Scott. Are there any other any other contributions? Councillor Condeco.
I did indicate quite early, and I'm quite keen to say a little bit about this because I've been around unfortunately far too long in these sort of places. I see why you need or want-
I'm going to have to find out if this guy has a is on Twitter or not. Or it might be even on Blue Sky, I don't know. I'm going to have to try and find this guy. I want to speak to this guy. Let's find him. Ah, here he is. Is he still on Twitter though? Green Nuneaton. Oh, well, we're following him. We're following him on Twitter. We'll say, we'll see if we can't get him on. I genuinely would love to speak to this guy. That would be funny. Yeah, oh, please can we see what Kent County Council meetings in Dover when the EU EES system comes in? That will be funny. That will be, I think that will be very funny when that happens. I mean, they're already complaining about Operation Brock down in Kent, which is kind of funny because that is a direct consequence of Brexit. Like, that is the direct consequence of Brexit. That is something apparently you guys wanted. That's the consequence of Brexit. That's what you have to live with. But, oh no, we're complaining about it because we don't like the fact that our of our main motorways in the county has been turned into a massive lorry park. Well, oh no, you were kind of told about that.
On political assistance. It is someone to be a go-for, it is someone to do some work. But as a group, particularly your cabinet roles and your chairing of various committees, you must collectively be on something like 400,000 if you added all your allowances up. And you think, well, you need someone as a go-for, someone to do some research. Well, you can actually all contribute 10% of your wages and hire yourself a researcher if you want to do that. Yeah, you are a political party, you can spend your money as you wish. You can also go to conferences, learn about things, share what goes on at other councils. I'm very sceptical of keep going to conferences too much, but I did go to the LGA one this year. And I attended every session I possibly could to find out about things that are ongoing issues. So I went to ones about special educational need and disability. I went to lots about the finances. I went to one about AI. There was lots going on. And there's also lots going on about local councils reorganisation. And so you could go and listen to someone from Northampton. Yeah, they've had their councils chopped in half reorganisable, but you can learn their stories by going to events. And as 22 of you, you don't all need to be experts in everything. When I started, it was me and Jonathan, we took half of the county council and learned about that part. There's now seven of us. So one of us can do education, one of us can talk rubbish like me. We're going to be experts on little bits of what the council does. So between the 22 or 23 of you, you can actually do this role of research, learning stuff and get to be-
Basically calling them out for being lazy and not doing their job.
Become experts in a small part of the massive thing that is Warwickshire County Council. We have 5,000 odd staff. We have so many different services. I think someone said councils provide 800 services. Yeah, obviously some are districts, but there is so much we do. But we don't need one person to run around helping us. And if you did have one person, what would they do? It's far better having a collective knowledge. And you look around the room here, the Lib Dems and the Greens and the Tories, and they've gathered over their years lots and lots of knowledge. So I know we're on different sides of politics, but actually you can ask us about stuff. Yeah, if you want to talk about rubbish or education or whatever, there are people in this room who've done battles on those things. So it is really a hard to justify thing to take on more staff when we have the knowledge. We have budgets, we can go to training and conferences. This council is very good at letting us go to conferences, et cetera. So if there's areas you need to research or boost your knowledge, that opportunity is there. And actually, learning what other councils do is really, really useful. Both from the things like the Walks and Ways Partnership, we've got an A5 partnership. There's all sorts of things going on where you talk to other councils and see what goes on. So just having a person is not going to solve your problems. It is not going to create some policy for you. I know you've got your ideas brought down from the above, from Farage, telling you what things you should say.
Yep, bringing up again, good one.
You need some policies for Warwickshire. And to create those, talk to people, see what other councils are doing and actually talk to the other groups. Because we have a few years knowing what we're doing. So I'm going to strongly vote against this. Our public don't want to spend 150,000 for three years. It's about half a million by the time you've had inflation and all the things as costs go up. Half a million, I can do useful things with that. At Cabinet, we had a paper on the domestic violence. And it was saying that more people would have to have group sessions of counselling rather than one-to-one counselling. That's exactly the sort of thing which, if we did have some more money, a bit more money into that, is exactly the sort of area you think, well, that's a good area to spend money on. Political assistance, maybe not.
Thank you very much councillor Condeco. We have a couple of other speakers. Councillor Darnish, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have worked as a political assistant and I think it had some value. And councillor Feeney, I know you work in a political office and I'm not sure what your day-to-day role is or your job title is, but I'm sure you provide some political assistance. And I'm sure you think that what you do has some value. I agree with councillor Warwick, it's about not the principle because there is a principle that's established, all groups use them, the green groups use them, Liberals, Labour, all of you. Job descriptions are available with a simple Google search, by the way, if you want to know what they do. So I just think there is a little bit of hypocrisy for us- So I just think there is a little bit of hypocrisy for us to simply say no.
Yeah, these, the Conservatives have got the wrong end of the stick on this one. It's, they are spending money that they have not got allocated, which you would think, which you would think, given, you know, Conservative, you think they would be up in arms against this extra spending. But I'm quite surprised they're not. Um, which again shows you that, you know, not all Tories are, are the same. Just as not all people in the Labour Party are same, not all those people, Lib Dems are same, not all people in the Green Party, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are the same. You know, a lot of people in these parties, um, they are sometimes a bit more big tent than they think.
Because we don't know what value they will provide. I think there is an, there's an established role for them. And I think councillor Warwick is right. We need to know what book, what bang we're going to get for our buck. And I think that's the most important thing. I don't think we should dismiss it because I think it could be, and it's also, it's pretty derogatory to our officers to say that a political assistant might come in for X, Ys, A group and undermine them. I don't think that's their, that's their role.
No one's saying that going to undermine them. No one is saying that they are going to undermine anyone. What they are saying is, why do you need to spend all this extra money on hiring a political assistant where you have all these people at the council that already do that job? Why are you not making use of the resources that you already have available to you? I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, the Conservatives in this one have completely got the wrong end of the stick on this one. I, I, I don't know.
Never seen that really happen. I mean, I've worked with political assistants for ministers, worked with SPADs, I've worked with MPs political assistants. So I, I think probably a little bit of reflection, a little bit less hypocrisy, because all of our groups do use them. And then perhaps a little bit more detail.
Thank you very much, councillor Darnish. And councillor Langa, please.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair. I think throughout this debate, I've been sitting here as actually the second youngest councillor in this chamber, thinking about what the last couple of months has meant to me in coming into quite a daunting experience. And I think the one thing that it made me reflect on is the support that is required for any of our groups to, to function. Now, I've drawn on all of the different members of my group, as I'm sure all of the other new, uh, new members have done in their groups. I've drawn on our group in the, in the LGA. Um, I've drawn on other parts from within my party who are able to advise me on how I do my job most effectively. And so, yeah, I, I take the Conservative group's kind of point that we need to think, okay, does this actually pay off? And now I've, I've got a background in consulting. I've worked in healthcare consulting and we established a trial team where we tried to save money for the NHS by diverting people away from A&E and making sure they had care in the community. Now, in going through that process of trying to establish that team, did I just say this is needed? Trust me, it will be fine. It will pay off in the long run. No, we had to put forward an actual business case in terms of what money are we actually going to save that is going to justify this investment. And so agnostic of the point of whether you agree with political assistance, I don't think the thinking has gone into this motion in order to make those sums balance. And now the second point I wanted to raise was actually around the Members' Code of Conduct. Now, we all signed it when we became councillors and I believe it's point J, my laptop is helpfully turned off. Point J in the Members' Code of Conduct, where we, we all agreed that we would treat our colleagues and officers with respect in all of our doings and to engage with them in the appropriate manner. Now, I don't think that in this debate, we've entirely upheld that and I would say that for across the, uh, the political spectrum. And I don't think that in surrounding this motion, that the administration has either. And so I would ask that they reread that Code of Conduct that they signed up to and make sure that they think about that whenever they go to the media in, in future. But thank you very much.
He probably should have hit harder back on that. I'd say should have gone a lot harder into the fact and just said, hey, look, Code of Conduct, you politicised our, our officers and basically said that they're useless. Like, you know, that's, that's not on. But, you know, that's his, that's his moment, that's his, that's his time, but that's what I would have done. But, you know, I, I'm, I'm not in that chamber.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor. Uh, the, in the absence of any other desire to speak on this subject, we shall move to invite the, uh, seconders who've reserved their right to speak, to speak on this occasion. Councillor Finch, please.
Oh, here we go. Here we go.
Thank you, Chairman. This debate has gone on for a long time. A lot of you are saying the same points. I'm looking at it. It's total hypocrisy. In other councils, they do it. I, you, councillor Rudehouse, you make a solid point. Where's the money going to come from? As we said in our election manifesto, we will be cutting the net zero agenda. It is like that Titanic that is in front of councillor Candice Court. It's a policy that will sink. As an administration, we will be looking at cutting the net zero agenda, DEI, things like that, that we said on the tin. It's what the people of Bedworth.
It is going to save next to nothing, next to nothing. But when it comes to the net zero agenda, oh boy, oh boy, wait until you see the motion that happens in a bit.
North Warwickshire, Nuneaton and the rest of the people that voted for reform, that's what they voted for and we'll be looking at doing that. If you want to stick with your integrity with the Lib Dems, you say you vote against it. In the legislation, you do not have to fill the role, which will save the money. Don't do it. Stick on that hill. Same with the.
Except, except that money can then not be spent. It can't just be put into somewhere else, somewhere else or into a different, you know, into send or education or something else. That money gets sunk into that position. So long as these reform idiots continue on having an, and, you know, a political assistant. So it is still wasting money.
The Conservatives, if they would like to do the same. In the legislation, it's clear. It states the three largest parties get them. I'm sorry about the Lib Dems and Greens. Uh, sorry, Labour and Greens, uh, you don't get one. But like I said, if you want to stick to your word and vote against it, don't fill the role. The money doesn't have to be spent. It'll be less than the figures that you're saying. There's a lot of misinformation in the media about this and I'll keep it brief. We have asked for an apology off the BBC about this because they have got this wrong on a huge scale, uh, about the figures. And that's where we'll be looking at. And to answer your question, Gerry, we have been working with the corporate policy team to look at things like the Warwickshire Renewal Plan, Warwickshire Road Renewal Plan, um, looking at how to bridge the gap between the central vision in Warwickshire. Yes, it is a national problem and on Warwickshire County Council, we have to find the innovative, fresh change that the people voted for to create this.
On a point of order, uh, please, Mr Chairman. Could the leader of the council please state when those meetings took place and any notes that took place of those meetings?
Yes, good.
I've spoken to the exec directs on many occasions regarding Warwickshire Road Renewal Plan that will be creating. Uh, I have spoken to many exec directs regarding Children's Services, which is my portfolio. Other portfolio holders have done the same. Cabinet are working with the council to get things over the line, get things through. These political assistants are very much needed. As we can see, we don't have a majority on the council. We are in a minority administration and we have to work together. We have to compromise. And that will be done in the chamber, but it could also be done whilst creating policy. And these political assistants will support us do that and ensure that there's a better way, a new way, a fresh way of enacting the change that people wanted. And I will keep it brief.
Why? Why, why does hiring a political assistant suddenly bring in this fresh air of policy? Like, I, I, I don't understand. I, I, I just don't understand why this, this, you, you bring in someone for this political assistant position and all of a sudden policing magic. This has not been thought out at all. This has not been thought out at all. He has not met with any council officers. He has not had any, I guarantee you, he's had meetings. I, if I were the Lib Dems or any other people, I would be pushing hard. I would be pushing very, very hard to get notes of the, of any meetings, any of these portfolio holders have had. Basically to see just what the conversations have been like because honestly, just as you are seeing with this answer here, it is vague. It is vague at best. It is vague. Yeah, Darren says here, okay, they're basically justifying the reason why Reform are going to do things differently by saying that other councils are doing the very same thing. So basically Reform are no different then. Yeah. Uh, honestly, it's just in, in, insane. I, I, I can't understand like why he thinks bringing in a political system is somehow going to be a magic that's somehow going to bring this brand new innovation. I, I don't understand what this is. Like, I, I, I just don't understand what he was. And I've seen some people say, is he stoned? I think George Finch was on the drink asking that question.
If, I do hope that people vote for it, but if you don't and you vote against, then don't fill the role and you won't have one. It's simple.
Thank you, councillor Finch. And the request for documentation is noted, councillor Rudehouse. Thank you. Councillor Bannister, would you like a right to reply, please?
Interesting debate. And it's nice to see that some people recognise this for what it is, a tool to help the democratic process. Now, people say, why do we need this? As if we can't cope.
You can't cope. You can't set policies. You, you can't, you, you've, you literally cannot. That is why you are getting a political assistant, because you cannot do that. Beyond belief. And as to Finch's point, well, if we do pass it, don't fill the role, that money still sits there, gets wasted. Means it can't be spent, means it can't be moved to other areas. So that money still goes to waste.
Coming across. Are you saying that the Prime Minister can't do his job? Are you saying that the Cabinet ministers who have SPAGs can't do their job? Are you saying they're at that level earning the amount of money they earn? And with the civil service there, the same as we have officers, but they are politically restricted. Are you saying that they haven't got a clue that they need help?
The difference is they are running the entire country. And that is a bit more complicated than running a bit more of a, you know, a tiny, smaller local council. You know, because you have everything you need. You have everything you need to do that at your fingertips with those council officers and you are not going to them with your proposals, with your policy, because you don't have any policy, because they haven't come up with any policy still. And yet all, we need a political assistant because if we do, it'll be a breath of fresh air. They'll bring in innovation. What innovation do they think they are bringing in? Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Yeah. Bear in mind, who knew council meetings would have been entertaining? Council meetings are normally quite entertaining, but they unfortunately don't get the, uh, the airtime that they normally would do, which is, I think, quite a shame sometimes, but there you go. So anyway, let's finish this off. Let's see what his other objections are.
No, I'm sure you're not. The issue here has been raised as one of money. We will have to find that money. It's in the report. It will have to be found from elsewhere, but we see this as value for money, adding value to the work we do in this chamber and for the council. The only problem we've had, and let's make this absolutely clear because I'm really fed up with this. What have they done? They've been here two months. They haven't got this. They haven't done that. They haven't done the other. You've been here for donkeys.
Uh, no, they're right. You've been here two months and you ran on an entire agenda that you were going to come in and fix everything, that you would hit the ground running. And now you've come in, wanted to spend 190, 100, sorry, 150K extra a year to get political assistance in because you can't come up with policy, you can't come up with policy proposals to put before council officers so that they can implement it. It's embarrassing. It is embarrassing. It is incredibly embarrassing. And you're just highlighting this every single moment. Every single moment you are saying this, every single moment you are trying to repudiate that. Doesn't matter. Oh, look at all these. They had policy, they did stuff, they passed stuff. Everything that Reform UK have not done in literally two months. It is embarrassing.
Years. You come in, you set your policies, the year after you might tweak them. I think, I think the Liberals have got 20 policies. We've been here a couple of months. We've had meeting after meeting to find out what is here. What is 600 million? What is 5,000 employees? And we're doing that by due diligence and we will not be harried and rushed and you will see policies. I think the debate was.
When? When? You should have had these policies at the election. That is, that is what you are meant to run on. You run on something, we have this policy, vote for us, because when you vote for us, we will get in and we will do X, Y and Z policy. If they got X, Y and Z policy, no. They've barely even started on the A. They're barely even there. There is no policy to speak of whatsoever coming from any of these Reform councils, let alone Warwickshire. And I feel sorry for people who live in Warwickshire. I really do. If this is, this is your caliber of candidate, I feel sorry for you. I really do.
Fair. People have raised their issues and I think they have been answered across the chamber. I commend this to you. I commend this to you. This is for democracy and to give people the tools. We're not Cabinet ministers on 100, 150,000 with a civil service running. We are councillors. We're new councillors. In the past, we've been told, yes, other groups have used this. We're new. We're not saying we need this because we're stuck. We're saying, well, add value, help us do our job.
What value? How would this add value? That is still something they have not explained.
For the very people who elected us in Warwickshire. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bannister. Councillor Bannister, you are moving, you are moving that recommendation.
I am indeed, sir.
Thank you. Yes, that's good. Right, I'm going to call for a vote now on, on this and indicated by. Right, I'm going to call for a vote now on this and indicated by hands again, all those in favour. Sorry.
Could I ask for a recorded vote, please?
Yes, certainly. We'll record the vote. I can see one, two, three, four, five wanting to get up. I think it's nearly lunchtime, so. I saw the intent first. Thank you. Yes, we'll record.
Okay, so this time when I call your name, could you say either for, against or abstain? Aikenhead.
Hang on, we'll skip forward.
Alban.
Against.
Bannister.
Against.
Against.
Garland.
For.
For.
Against.
Harris.
For.
Holland.
Against.
Howard.
For.
Jones.
Against.
Keeling.
Abstain.
Kettle.
Abstain.
Conde Corr.
Against.
Langer.
Against.
Matekski. Sorry. McAllister.
Against.
Morris.
Abstain.
Roberts.
Against.
Again, you'll notice the Conservatives abstaining here.
Routhaus.
For.
Shingler. Stephens.
Against.
For.
And again, it's down to the chair to cast the deciding vote, I believe.
So at the end of that vote, there is no majority. It is twenty-three, four, twenty-three against, eight abstentions. Therefore, it is the chairman's casting vote.
This is going to become monotonously regular, isn't it? So, so I'll, so I'll be. I'm not going to repeat what I said earlier. This is disappointing that it's having to come to the chair every single time. It is clear there's, there is a, there is a need for this, so I should be voting for.
No, there isn't. Why would you do that?
The proposal is therefore carried.
Right, moving back, I'm sensing the energy in the room has hit its lunchtime maximum. The, I'm going to suggest an adjournment for forty-five minutes for lunch, please. If you can be back in the room at as near as, as near as possible to two o'clock as you can, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm, I I, I am sorry, it is absolutely ludicrous. You would, you would pass that. Absolutely ridiculous. You would pass this motion. Why did, why did the Conservatives abstain? Why did the Conservatives abstain on this? Honestly, what, what, what are they doing? Darren, yeah, after two months, all I'm hearing is that Reform are just being very defensive, playing the victim and demanding that we need more time to try to justify wasting a hundred and fifty quid on something that's not even needed. Oh dear. Yeah. Yep. I'm sure the chairman doesn't actually mind deciding. Yeah, like I say, he's, he's a Reform guy, so he's just going to vote Reform every single time. He's done so twice already now. In, in this session, he approved councillor Finch and he voted for for this as well. That's a waste of a hundred and fifty quid. The hundred and fifty quid wasted on that. Where are they going to get this money from? I don't know. Although they'll cut net zero. They will cut the DEI programmes. What DEI programmes? Jesus. Something unfortunately I might have to look forward to in my own local council. So I am not looking forward to. I am not looking forward to. I really am not. I am not optimistic. I hope it doesn't. I hope. I hope it doesn't, but good lord if it does. I'll tell you what, it might make me run for my own local council if it does happen. Good lord. Yeah, did the chair, of course, think that they needed the guidance? Yeah. I, I think they did, but you don't need the guidance. They've already got it. All those, those, those council officers that they mentioned. Oh, what does like, you know? All those employees look like? What even is that a response to? Were the motions, decisions been done behind closed doors? No. How motions etc are passed for the council depends. You have to normally for a council meeting propose a motion beforehand. You have to have it submitted in writing. Make sure it is all submitted with all etc documentation before the council meeting so that by a set date, so that all councillors can see it. Then it is then voted on. Basically, it saves time. Otherwise, like I say, we're already what, three hours into this meeting, into this video? Nothing would get done. Now, sometimes motions can be brought up, as you will see in a moment. There is a motion about to be brought up. Which, again, will be quite interesting because it is basically Warwickshire declaring a climate emergency proposed, believe it or not, believe it or not, by the Conservatives of all people. So let's see if we can find that then.
Thank you very much for the reminder that that steak bake obviously touched the right spot. The, I'm bringing the meeting back to order. We're going to come back to item number seven, constitutional matters, please. And I should be asking councillor Mike Bannister, please, to move the recommendation as circulated in the report. Mike.
Thanks, Chair. I had a steak bake as well. Very, very nice. This is at pages fifty-nine to seventy, councillors. And it's constitutional amendments and the appointment of the statutory scrutiny officer. The main focus of the report is the appointment of the scrutiny officer and a little bit of tidying up following the elections on the details. Scrutiny officer promotes the role of the authority's scrutiny committees.
Let's skip forward.
The council has done some great work since the climate change, as climate emergency was declared, and climate change is impacting on resources across the council. And wetter winters and Warwickshire, and Warwickshire, we are seeing far more.
A number of changes were identified. They're set out in the table which you have on page fifty-seven.
Oh, so this motion gets hijacked. This motion gets hijacked. You are about to see something really fun happen. Get ready, strap in, get your popcorn ready.
Ask you to approve the report and the amendments I set out. Thank you.
So quickly before we get in, it looks like, by the looks of it, I don't know if I skipped too far forward ahead, looks like this motion is about to be hijacked. Which, if it is, we are about to have some fun. So I am out of drink, so I will just quickly say, have a quick comfort break, charge your glasses, get your popcorn ready. Things could be about to get very, very fun indeed. So I will see you back in a bit. Because, yeah, things could be about to get very interesting very quickly. And we're back. Like I say, I told you we would be quick. So things could be about to get interesting. For those of you just joining us, we are going over the previous Warwickshire County Council meeting. So a quick TDLR, if you're just joining us, what you might have missed. Yesterday, we covered the election of the nineteen-year-old, which came down to a tied vote, twenty-three versus twenty-three. The Conservatives abstained, which still do not know why they abstained. If anyone does know why, or you see anything about these Conservatives saying why they abstained, why they chose to do so, please do send it my way. I would love to know what they're up to. So they abstained, hence why George Finch, now controller of now in charge of Warwickshire County Council, like I say, nineteen-year-old. You know, in charge of a multimillion pound council with, you know, thousands of staff. What could possibly go wrong? We've now also just seen the debate that took place about political assistance, which again came down to a tied vote of twenty-two, twenty-three versus twenty-three. And once again, the chair, who again is a Reform guy, sided with Reform. They do not need political assistance, full stop. Everyone highlighted the fact you have all these, all these resources, all these resources for yourself. Why are you not using these resources? It seems that you are the one wasting the resources that you have access to. But oh no, we need, we need political assistance. Because it'll help us do our job better. Well, so far you haven't done a very good job. So unfortunately, that passed again. I'm sure the people of Warwickshire are going to be ecstatic about the fact that Reform are now having to, that the council is now having to find a hundred and fifty quid extra a year or potentially even slash services or other things. Basically to fill a role of political buddy. I'm sure the people of Warwickshire are ecstatic about that. If you are in Warwickshire, by the way, you can actually do something about this, believe it or not. First of all, you can, and I believe you should, be sorting out a petition to present to the council that spending this money on a non-elected bureaucrat is absolutely unacceptable. And then if you do want to, as I always do at this point, I bring out this book. This is Paint Your Town Red. This is very good. This book tells you how to interact with the council and how you can put forward a motion on your local council, which I urge you to do because if you do put forward this motion, if you do present that, you can just say, we do not want this money spent at all. So, but you need to act faster. You need to act fast. So where are we? There we are. So now we're here and I think something incredibly funny is about to happen. What was meant to be the appointment of the scrutiny officers might be about to go a bit a bit haywire. We'll see. We will see.
Thank you, councillor Bannister, and may I ask for a second, please?
I'm happy to second that, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor.
And I waive my right to speak.
Are you waiving your right to speak at this time? Okay. Any proposed amendments? None. And I move to invite a debate. Anyone like to raise a question? Councillor Warwick?
Yes, very briefly, I think Deb's an excellent choice for the role. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much, councillor Warwick. I agree with you completely. I think Deb's done this role before. And Deb's ideally suited for this role. Thank you for taking your time, Deb. I appreciate that. Anyone else? Not at this time. Out in the absence of any further debate, I would like to move, there won't be any need for summary or any seconding comments. None. Then we should move straight to the vote, shall we? Would you like to say anything further, Mike? No, no. So we'll move straight to the vote then to help with time. And all those in favour.
This is going to get hijacked. No.
And against. Any abstentions? One. Thank you, councillor Conde Corr. That one is carried, yeah. Okay, we're going to item eight, notices of motion and speeches are invited to last five minutes maximum. There's a, there are three motions in front of us. The first is the Green Group motion supporting climate change emergency declaration in Warwickshire. And I would like to invite councillor Will Roberts to move the motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. On the twenty-fifth of July, two thousand and nineteen, Warwickshire County Council unanimously declared a climate emergency. And from that, the council has been working to adapt to the challenges of climate change in Warwickshire. Now, when I talk climate change, I do want to address the elephant in the room. I understand there are differing views on what is meant by climate change, from human activity driving current climate change to more natural causes. But humans are having an influence to it's just natural causes. But the majority of people in this room do understand things are changing. I mean, it is hard to deny climate change is happening when all you have to do is look outside the window. Now, we could debate the cause of it all day, spend even longer covering the geopolitics of it. But what we need to do is focus on the impact on Warwickshire and do our little bit of the puzzle. Warwickshire is seeing an increase in flooding, heatwaves, drought and wildfires, wildfires, sorry. All posing direct risk to Warwickshire's communities, economy and residents. In the past ten years, the UK has had its warmest five years on record. And on the nineteenth of July, two thousand and twenty-two, the UK experienced its first temperature over forty degrees. Now, here in Warwick, we also set a record at thirty-eight point four degrees. And I know some members will remember it who were in the last administration because we were sitting here on that day with a lot more fans going on than this. Every time a heatwave happens, the most vulnerable in our society are affected as they feel the severe effects of heat more than others. And it's long been known that death rates increase in heatwaves. That cannot be ignored. On the flip side of heatwaves, the UK is suffering from warmer and wetter winters and Warwickshire. In Warwickshire, we are seeing far more localised flooding and surface flooding impacting our resources and communities. Our fire service, for example, is responding to more callouts related to flooding. Currently, it's estimated the twelve thousand properties are at risk from river flooding and around forty thousand properties from surf, at risk from surface flooding in Warwickshire. The River Seven partnership has estimated that residential property at risk of flooding in Warwickshire is worth over two point nine billion pounds. And the commercial property at risk is worth over one point three billion pounds.
Yep. So why would you not focus on net zero stuff which will help mitigate that? Unbelievable, but there you go. Unbelievable, but there you go.
Even if one home is flooded, it is devastating and can ruin lives. That cannot be ignored. As I've touched on flight, climate, sorry, as I've touched on, flooding can impact on commercial properties. Our economy is impacted by climate change. And one part of the economy which is suffering are farmers. Recent research by the ECRIU, who recently surveyed UK farmers, found that 87% experienced reduced productivity because of extreme weather. 84% had suffered a fall in crop yields. And in past five years, 78% of farmers have been hit by drought. Britain's largest retailers have also said food prices, food prices have been pushed up by hot weather hitting harvest yields. Climate change is impacting farmers in Warwickshire and residents' back pocket, adding to the cost of living crisis. It's also hard to miss stories in the press. Recently, there was a farmer just outside of Leamington Spa who lost part of his winter barley crop due to a fire because of these dry conditions we're having. The impact on our economy and cost of living crisis cannot be ignored. The council has done some great work since the climate change, as climate emergency was declared. And climate change is impacting on resources across the council, whether it's the flooding team, our fire and rescue service, public health, the community team, or highways, to name a few. We cannot ignore how climate change is impacting on our residents, our communities and our economy. It is not time to take a step backwards. That's why it's really, it's why it's important to reconfirm our commitment to the climate emergency and re-establish the working group to review where we are with the impacts of climate change in Warwickshire. So I ask you all to vote for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And may I have a second, please? Seconder?
I second the motion and I reserve my right to speak. Hello, I second the motion and I reserve my right to speak.
We have two seconds reserved? Is that fine? Yes, good, good. So that's that's going to be fun later on. Okay, so we're going to deal with any proposed amendments. Do we have one amendment, do we not? From the Conservative group. And councillor Warwick, would you like to move the amendment?
Chair, thank you very much. I'm very happy to move this amendment. We are broadly in support of the motion as it came forward today, but with one or two adjustments that we felt were important. I'm glad that the green, the green mover of the motion put forward energy security. Because I think that is something that we sometimes miss when we discuss energy. It's not just about the green agenda. It has an important part to play, but it's also about energy security. And we saw through what happened with the Ukraine conflict, how easily our energy security can be impacted and the impact on price. And I come back to price in the other item that I'm putting in here, that we should be pragmatic. So as we strive towards a greener future, we need to consider the cost. It can't be green at any cost. It has to be a green push. But consider that there at some point will be consumers and businesses that have got to pay for this energy. And on top of that as well, I think the most important item that we wanted to raise was the appalling evidence of exploitation around some of the manufacture of green energy products. Both in the extraction of minerals and in the construction of panels with the use of slave labour in China. We would like to ensure that any materials that we buy, that our supply chain is studied, that if possible, certificates of origin can be secured so that we know that whilst securing a greener
I love it. Conservatives arguing for certificate of origin. Anyone, anyone remember the whole Brexit skirmishes? Well, like the Conservatives were like dead against rules of origin? Anyone remember those, those halcyon days? Well, here you have a Conservative arguing in favour for rules of origin checks.
Cleaner future for Warwickshire. We're not doing that at the cost of exploitation of people elsewhere in the world, because that is a price just not worth paying. So I hope the mover and seconder will accept our proposals as a, as a friendly amendment. And I'll pass to my deputy to, to second that.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Reserved. Is this considered a friendly motion, amendment? Do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes, I do accept it as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That becomes the substantive motion that we're going to be moving forward.
And now the Conservatives are about to vote through.
We have a debate. We have a question for debate.
You know, that they are accepting climate change, that they are part of the net zero agenda, that they want to work forward for this. Which is again, interesting to see, given of course, the stuff that Kimmy Badenoch, of course, talks about recently.
Right, there we go. That's it. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow members. First time doing this, so sort of point out a few things really, statistics really, and ask some fair questions of the room. I'm conflicted on this issue because I work in the energy business and I do believe in clean energy. And that being broadly the right thing to do. But again, I think as councillor Warwick called out, there are some concerns around cost and perhaps the rate of speed we're moving at. So in context, the UK population is something in the region of 69.5 million, good by UN figures. Warwickshire County Council's population, as far as I can tell, is about 608,000 people. So roughly 8.7% of the overall number of people in the country. So how does the global carbon emissions picture look? Well, first and foremost, according to 2023 figures, it's probably lower than this. The UK is ranked about 18th globally for carbon emissions. And that represents about 0.8% of the total share. We're behind China at 34%, the USA at 14%, India at 76%, I can go on, of course. The average household income for the Neath and Bedworth where I reside, unsurprisingly, is lower than the South. It's something in the region of 27,000, 27 and a half thousand pounds. Now, based on the two biggest bills, I think, that many of my constituents would pay, so energy bills and council tax. That's roughly 4,000 pounds per year. So I would say something close to 15% of their gross income, not net, because of course there'd be tax as well. So my concern is this motion effectively means that some of the least well-off people out there, including in the north of the county, will have to continue to pay high energy prices, high bills and to fund this. And that will potentially put even more people into fuel poverty. Furthermore, is that, is that the outcome that the Green Party want? And I know it's important to you, but just bear in mind, obviously, those people who will suffer from this burden. Also, is it the job really at the moment, particularly with, you know, finances being the way they are, to be fighting climate change? I know many are keen to do it. And again, I don't, I don't have a problem if you're willing
Oh, our finances are so terrible right now at this moment. Let's not fight climate change. Which is it eventually going to lead to you having to spend more money on the consequences of climate change? What, what, what an argument. What, what, what an argument there that has been put forward by this. What on earth is this guy talking about?
At your own time. When we arguably have more pressing matters, such as, of course, dealing with the the deficit we've got for send and social care for the current fiscal year, which from what I can tell is something in the region of 14, 15 million. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
It would be hilarious if you applied some of those very same similar arguments to like send or anything like that. Oh, well, you know, we're having to pay for this massive increase in, in, in social care costs. But should we have to pay for it, you know, when the worst off in, in, in society are going to have to pay more for it? Doesn't, it doesn't work as an argument quite as well, does it? If you start applying those climate, didn't climate arguments to things like send or anything else, does it?
Is there anyone, would anyone else like to speak on this? We've got councillor Langer, please.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I'd like to wholeheartedly agree with the mover of the motion and the previous speakers in terms of how climate action is important in protecting local residents, particularly from flooding, but from other kind of adverse weather impact. And I welcome the Conservative amendment to focus really on the causes of modern slavery and how we offshore some of the costs. And we shouldn't be doing that as we move forward. So thank you for all the contributions so far. I think we, when we talk about environmental action, we quite often focus on whether it be wildlife or ecology. I'd like to bring this back to actually an economic argument, which has kind of been touched on by the previous speaker. And I thought I'd look for some quotes that would kind of evidence this in some ways. And so I found an unlikely one from the Managing Director of Boston Consulting Group, one of the largest consulting firms in the, in the world. And they, they said that the economic case for climate action is clear, yet not broadly known and understood. Investment in both mitigation and adaptation could bring a return of around tenfold by 2100. This seems like far-fetched numbers, but it's really real. Because as we start seeing worse, worse environmental impacts, the people who are going to pay for it are our residents. And by investing now, we can offset so many costs going into the future. And so I think that we need to, as a council, as we care for the finances of the county and for our residents, focus in terms of how we adapt going into the future. Now, I think the financial case is strong. And so I'd like to move on to a little bit of what the amendment is touching on in terms of the moral case for it. Because as, because for those who are facing these economic and humanitarian crises brought on by climate change, many of them are people who have not had really any part in producing the effects that we are starting to see. And so again, I looked for a quote and I found another unlikely person, the famous environmentalist Michael Gove. And he said that the country that pioneered the industrial revolution, the UK, and therefore played the biggest role in powering the change in our climate, that hydrocarbon extraction and burning has generated, has a responsibility to lead the green revolution as well. To show that we understand our responsibility, our debt to the planet and our debt to the rest of the world. I think that this motion shows that we understand that.
Again, shocking, shocking that that motion came from Michael Gove. Have I missed, have I missed Keith of the Globe? No, not yet. Apparently that is still to come. That is still to come.
That debt and shows that we are going to act in accordance with that moral obligation that we have. So I fully support the action proposed and reaffirmed in this motion in how it protects our, our local residents and how it seeks to have an impact wider. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wayne, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had I been a member of this council on the 25th of July 2019, I can assure you that it would not have been a unanimous decision to declare a climate change emergency in Warwickshire. Before anyone has a fit of the vapors over this, let me assure you also that I am not a climate change denier. I know full well that the climate has been changing and it's getting warmer.
So why don't you do anything about it then?
For countless millions or even billions of years, since this planet came into existence, the climate has always changed one way or the other. It has fluctuated wildly at times.
This old chestnut. The, the, the climate has fluctuated wildly at times. Yeah, over the course of thousands of years. And right now, we are seeing some of this stuff accelerated because of us. So I, I, I am, this guy, I am not a climate denier, but I am going to use the, the oldest climate denying strategy in the book. It's been warm before. We've been through these warming periods before. What's the issue, guys?
That, I believe, is a universally accepted and scientifically proven fact. What I think is not universally accepted and proven as a scientific fact is that man, man's activity on this planet over the last century or so is the main driver of the current warming phase.
And that happens to be the science.
I think that in Britain, the biggest problem that we face climate is that successive waves of gullible politicians, most of whom are not scientists of any kind, let alone climate scientists.
These, these poor gullible politicians. These poor, what is this? What is this argument? I, I, what is, what is even this argument? These, these poor gullible politicians led astray, spending all this money on, you know, net zero, green energy transition, all this good stuff that is helping to advance the economy. The UK economy this year, the only growth, the only growth industry is green manufacturing. That is the only growth industry. But oh no, according to these Reform guys, we have to sweep it all away. And what? We have to live with the consequences in a couple of years. We have to spend 10, 20, 25, 30 times more of what we have to spend now. Again, but he's not a climate denier. He's not a climate denier, guys. But he just happens to be rolling out all those exactly same climate denying arguments. Awfully, awfully suspicious that, isn't it?
Have put virtue signalling ahead of the country's interests. Hence, we have some of the highest energy prices in the developed world. Too much of our, in our industry has been priced out of existence. Too much productive agricultural land has been sacrificed to become expensive and almost certainly inefficient solar farms. Our plentiful reserves of oil and gas lie abandoned largely under the North Sea. While our competitors next door to us, literally next door to us in, in Europe, continue extracting.
It is, the North Sea has become too expensive to extract those barrels from. Pure and simple. This is why the North Sea has been dying off for the past couple of years. Anyone will be able to tell you that. That is the case. But again, usual climate denier argument, oh, why don't we just use it? It's too expensive to extract now. It costs more to extract a barrel of oil from the North Sea than it does to actually sell it on the market. How much are you going to sell that barrel for? If it's costing you X amount of money, which is, it is, how much do you sell that money for? That does not solve our, our price problem. Because how much then is the energy company then going to sell that for? Doesn't solve our, our energy prices at all.
I think theirs regardless. Meanwhile, the world's biggest polluters expand their industrial output so that they can flood our markets with cheap exports to the further detriment of our own.
Again, they ignore what's going on in China. China is taking this actually very, very seriously. It is investing millions, millions of dollars into climate change, net zero stuff, green energy. It is making that transition itself. And they deny that that is happening, even though the evidence is right there.
And manufacturers. Ironically, China, of course, is the dominant source of solar panels and wind turbines in the UK. So I am pleased at least to see the amendment moved by the Conservatives. Mr. Chairman, I am not prepared to be part of this disastrous exercise. And I will be voting against this motion this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wayne. Councillor Edwards, please.
I wanted to call on the councillor who made the point about working in the energy industry. So the South of Warwickshire does have a higher
So the South Warwickshire does have a higher gross income. What I am seeing more and more, and quite frankly, I've also been a part of this, are residents installing solar panels and batteries. Then they are moving to electrification of their transport, space heating, along with their appliances. The outcome of that is twofold. First, the price of electricity is dictated by the price of gas unless you are on another tariff, which is supported by batteries. So by installing those batteries, they're getting lower energy bills. Solar panels are lowering the price again of that power. So in terms of your regional disparity, as people move to electrification, if we do not support, the wealthiest sections will see their bills going down. The not so wealthy, who cannot afford these investments, will see their bills going up.
Yep. Again, he's right on that.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kettle, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So what I've heard, it's not our fault. We're very small. We don't need to do anything about it. Well, that's happened many times in the past. Unless somebody took the lead, things did not change for the better. So I'm somewhat surprised to hear that suggestion here, but we do need to think somebody has to be the lead. And if we are the lead, that is once again a good thing for this country. I've seen the impact of flooding. I represent a rural division. Lots of rivers and lots of water. And I've spent, other than with highways, I've spent probably more time with the flood risk management team in this council over the last, well, over the period of my being in office than almost any other department of this council. I have seen devastation of flooding on people's homes. And this is not those who have grand parks with lakes and rivers running past them. These are people who are unfortunate enough to be living on low levels, quite close to streams, which are very pretty in the summer when they've got two or three inches of water in them. But when they're raging through your front door, it is pretty horrible. That's happened to me once as well, but not where I currently live. We need to think of the impact of flooding on everybody in this county. And we have a lot of water. We've got the Severn, we've got the Avon running one way, we've got Leam running through. I'm not quite familiar with North Warwickshire. But we have seen flooding coming out of the Avon and its tributaries fairly regularly over the last few years. As a member of Stratford District Council, I was involved in the location of the Peony Pavilion, a gift from China. And we wanted to put it outside the theatre somewhere appropriate. Environment agents would not let us do it because the increased concrete slabs would increase the flood risk to Stratford. Flooding is everywhere we look at. As a farmer, I probably spend as much time out in the fresh air as anybody else in this room. I have seen the impact last year of rain, rain, rain all through, all through to the late summer. A lot of farmers did not get any arable crops in last year at all. This year, I watched my own sheep picking away a ground that I have never in my life seen drier. It is the unpredictability that climate change brings, not general heating or general warming in the winter and wetter. It is we never know what's going to happen next. And that is something I have seen in my life, living in South Warwickshire, change materially over my lifetime. We have to do something. I completely support this amendment. And the, not the moment, the motion. And it is absolutely critical that we, as responsible members of the Warwickshire community, elected to represent our residents, that we grasp the nettle and there will be costs and there are costs. But we need to grasp the metal and say it is time to recognise things have changed. And we in Warwickshire and the other local authorities have adopted these motions. We need to move forward and ensure we protect our residents and our country and our economy against the negative impacts of the fluctuations and changes in weather.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Finch.
Oh, Christ.
Thank you, Chairman. And I thank councillor Cattle for his input. I do recognise the point of floods and that we need to invest and look into how to manage flood risks. And especially down in the south, you have a lot of rivers. We have the river Anker in Dunedin and that does flood. I acknowledge that. But what I see is the people of North Warwickshire in Bedworth and the north, we are being bankrupted and crippled by this net zero agenda. The country is, and the government is, the people of Warwickshire spoke.
As that other councillor just said, the people in the more affluent areas, they're transitioning. They're able to afford solar panels. They're able to afford batteries. They're able to afford, you know, electrification. That means their bills are going down because they don't have to rely on gas. The biggest problem we have in this country is that, thanks to the Conservatives, we went all in on gas. That proved incredibly detrimental. The only way to solve that is to move to net zero. But the problem is those people who cannot afford solar panels, et cetera. What are they going to do? You know, reform are all about, oh, well, we can't put the cost of net zero on all these poor people. So we have to scrap it. But when all these other people, the more affluent people, move to net zero, move to electrification, move to solar panels, move to batteries, move to thermal pumps, you know, whatever. They still can't afford it. They need help to do so. That is also part of net zero. And yet this guy wants to get rid of it. Again, ludicrous. I'm sorry, absolutely ludicrous. Why is this guy leading the council? Good point, actually. Are we going to see the rest of the meeting tonight? I don't know. We've been going for almost two hours and a half at this point and there's still, there's still over two hours to go on this meeting. Are we any close to finishing this? Where are we? No, we are. We are no near finishing this. However, let's go to councillor Condor, see if he.
I wasn't actually planning on speaking today on this motion, but the comments made on the Reform benches have been embarrassing, to be honest. We've generated in this country 5% of the world's total emissions. That's a staggering amount. We contribute, yes, 1% a year, but since the start of the industrial revolution, we've contributed 5% of the total responsibility. And we, as a nation, have a responsibility to take up that role and do and play our fair part. You've got members over there who are wearing Union Jack ties and they want to come into this chamber and talk about patriotism, and yet they don't want to contribute towards the saving their residents' bills. If they really cared about saving money for their residents, then they wouldn't be investing in green energy, which is the cheapest form. If they really cared about their residents and getting investment into public services, then they would be challenging for a wealth tax. But their leader doesn't want that. They get all of their news from GB News, which is a propaganda outfit, which is owned by a Dubai based investment firm. I wonder why they don't like the fact that climate change is real. I'll leave it there because this has just been astonishing, listening to the words over there. Complete denialism of the reality of the situation.
Councillor Scott, please.
Thank you, Chair. We've all talked today long and hard. Everybody has a different opinion. Climate change is manmade. Climate change is natural. The point is neither of those things. Climate change is happening. I have two young daughters that learn about climate change on a regular basis through their curriculum. It's about their future. It's about Warwickshire being at the forefront of climate change, of protecting those future, of being an inspiration. So I do appeal to you all, but mostly to the Reform councillors, to please think about future generations, our future citizens, and how we can protect them best.
Do that while going, oh, yes, but we spent 5% in this. 5% since the industrial revolution. The national people can figure something out for that. We are here as local people sorting out local problems. It's ridiculous to ask anything else for that to be the case, not understand where we're coming from as well when we're anti the net zero stuff. Because your premise is starting wrong. You're starting from an area which is.
Is this guy doing a call?
Means you have to go further.
A groucho mark.
Small people have to fund these things. We can insulate people's houses. I got into this stuff by accident because I was selling loft and cavity wall insulation. I was doing solar panels as well. I was one of the best in the country for doing solar panels. I know how they work. I know how they're made as an electrician. I know how they're funded in. The batteries he's talking about, I've installed them myself. They're great stuff, but people living directly hand to mouth will not install them. Have you been round those houses? Have you seen people's houses that live hand to mouth?
They can't afford them.
They don't have the room for them. They're so dangerous now. They've got to go on the far side of the building in a garage. It's not possible. Just not done. Oh, you want to store them in the loft? The house will burn down. It's not done. So, oh, we can install batteries. Lovely. People can't manage this stuff. It shouldn't be down to the common person to sort this out.
Hold on. Reform, we are all for the common people, but oh, we can't be down to the common people to sort this out. How about you come up with a solution for these poor areas where, I don't know, maybe you could have, dare I say, a communal battery hub where all that's generated power goes into a, you know, a safe off-site storage battery and then gets reused by the local people there. And that is an innovative idea, which I don't think Reform UK can even come up with. Ah, Yvonne, thank you very much. These people should have children. Yeah. That was councillor Jones. There's a lot of good Instagram stuff and the goings on in the council. You'll have to give him a follow. See what he was up to. Again, he would be interesting, I think, to get on as well. We might see if it's worth him getting on. Like, what's going on in Warwickshire council? So yeah, it would be interesting to sort of try and grab some of these councillors and get them on here to have a discussion. But yeah, I am generally. Yeah, we're going to finish off this section because it's so long. I say so long and I have skipped a fair bit, but we've been going almost three hours at this point. And I'm losing to Will the Live because honestly, some of the stuff Reform are doing is mind numbingly stupid.
I know it's mean to say, everyone's like, yeah, but the world will burn down. We're a fraction of a percent of a percent on this. It's unfair to ask people of this. And to not see that that's the point we're coming from is shocking. And everyone going, well, the world and all this, go back to your roots. People, we're trying to help those. We'll get them out of poverty. Yes, the installation is a great idea. Lovely. But I'm doing it to lower their bills, not to stop some great national disaster. As we've said before, it's not always where you get into, it's how you get there. And our viewpoint is lowering people's, heightening people's standard of living as a forefront. And seeing this money wasted on this is shocking. Anyway, I'll go on. You have a lovely day, guys.
That was pointless. That was a terrible argument.
Thank you, councillor. And councillor Bridgewater.
Yes, Chair, thank you. I'm going to be really quick about this. There isn't one of us that doesn't have a residency who doesn't go to a food bank at all. I have lots that go to food banks. Okay. We're putting them in this difficult situation where they're finding it hard to feed themselves, hard they're going to find, you know, the money to pay for these extra bills that you're going to put on them.
This is rich, coming from the party that's put forward a policy to spend 150k extra a year on political assistance to do their job. Maybe you should try explaining that to your residents going to the food bank. I hope someone brings up that point to him because I sure would.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bridgewater. Is anybody else speaking on the motion? We have councillor Drew, please.
Thank you. Just in case we haven't all already got this. Just to reiterate, the least well off in our county are going to be the first and the most to be impacted by the effects of climate change. We're not singing from different hymn sheets here. We're kind of singing from the same one. I can't say more. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Drew. At this point, we're going to take the secondary of the amendment, John McTekey, please, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. We've heard quite a few bits and pieces and different arguments here. And I think some of them are a bit irrelevant. You know, we're talking about electricity prices. We're not here to set the electricity prices. We are here to do our bit. And I think councillor Scott said, we have to look at our children, our grandchildren in the eye and tell them we did the best we could. Yes, I think councillor Chilvers, I agree totally with his summing up. Yeah, the climate has changed over millions of years, as being said, but the rate of acceleration is just off the scale at this time. I know the leader turned around and said that you've been, that Warwickshire has spoken and elected 22 of you. Well, I'd just like to remind the leader that they've also elected more than 60% more that don't agree with your policies. So let's just remember that. I'm quite pleased to be seconding this motion. And, you know, what we're looking at is us doing our bit. We cannot just look and say, look at them, they're not doing anything, so we're not going to do it either. We have to do what is right for us. Which making us, we can't instruct, blow them in council than everybody else.
Second to the motion originally, Jennifer McAllister, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm still sitting over here. Right, okay. I haven't got any props, so I apologise for that. Back in 2019, at the time when Warwick County Council and many councils of all tiers were unanimously declaring a climate emergency, I was a newly elected town councillor. It seems fitting that as a newly elected county councillor, I am seconding this motion to reaffirm this council's climate emergency declaration. Back in 2019, the driving force of such cross-party declaration was to take accountability, to lead by example, to recognise that everyone can make a difference, even in a small way, and to leave a thriving planet to future generations. It was important that these were not just words. So like many other councils, Warwickshire County Council set up a cross-party working group. I was pleased that real tangible actions for Warwickshire came off the back of its work. There's been an interesting debate today, this afternoon.
Yeah, interesting.
It's gone off, sorry. So an interesting debate this afternoon, some well constructed arguments and some less so. So it's probably worth me reminding people what today's amended motion sets out and its five actions. Firstly, reaffirm the 2019 declaration. It's about recognising the.
Thank you, councillor. And may I invite councillor Adrian Warwick, please, to some reply.
Thank you, Chair. And like the previous speaker, I'm impressed with councillor Condor's dazzling array of props this afternoon. I don't know if there's any more to come. Yeah, I just want us to come back to what we're looking at today and why we're looking.
In that. So, once again, we could go on for lots and lots. The final thing I will say, the motion, although it's entitled local transport, is also about how and.
And I think it passes. Of course, Reform vote against it.
And thank you very much for the debate today.
Have we missed it?
Thank you, councillor Roberts. That concludes the debate section and the movement of the motion. Now we go to the vote, please. All those in favour, a show of hands?
The globe bit was at 3.15.
If you wouldn't mind keeping them raised for a moment.
Let's watch this get passed. I want to know what the, the final vote was.
All those against? Abstentions, please. The motion is carried.
They're not going to read out the, oh, they're not going to read out the results. Anyway, what was it, 3.15?
To do something, I completely support this amendment and the, not the amendment, the motion. And it is absolutely critical that we, as responsible members of the Warwickshire community, elected to represent our residents, that we grasp the nettle and there will be costs and there are costs. But we need to grasp the metal. And motion.
I do reckon looking south, I'm sure in Beddall, the people, councillors, looking at how to do that, to agree to it.
Thank you, councillor Finch. Councillor Condor.
Here he is.
Good afternoon, Chair. I could talk for hours on this, I assume you'll only give me five minutes. I will start with my 12 years as a borough councillor. I have seen eight houses flood. Six were flooded in 2012 by surface water flooding. Most of our flooding is not actually rivers rising, it's the water running down from the high ground, in our case, towards, down from Hinkley, into people's homes and not exiting on the other side. This is absolutely devastating. The six houses that flooded in November 2012 were getting ready for Christmas. Five of them had to be abandoned for over six to nine months. And I saw one of the residents carry their Christmas presents out to their cars to take to somewhere to live for the night. Absolutely catastrophic. We have got developments behind that now and a pond that protects them. Storm Hank, Henk, or however you pronounce it, a year and a half ago, we had two houses where internal flooding started coming down from the new developments. The new developments had built over the exit of a stream from a field. Absolutely planning disaster. Our flood team have had that fixed. So really good result now. When the flood happened, we had two of our fire engines pumping out from their back gardens into the balancing pond. There was a pond there, but it was in the wrong place. So the pond didn't catch the floodwater. So we really need to be on top of this stuff and be designing for all this flood. And I'm passionate about getting our flood defences right over a wide area. Now, climate change and science, Mr. Wayne or councillor Wayne. We have lots of people into science. We used to have one called Margaret Thatcher, she was a chemist, and back in the 1980s, she was telling her all about climate change. Yeah, anyone who's a scientist who looks at the maths, works out the difference between long-term trends, things that happen over tens of thousands of years and things that are happening over 10 or 20 years. Clearly, the two things both happen at the same time. But what we're getting now is clearly and demonstratable man-made climate change. And if you look at the globe.
No, here it is.
You can tell the difference and all the scientists can. Because if the sun was getting hotter, the world would get hotter at the equator. If what we've got is greenhouse gases, you're making a greenhouse. And what the scientists are telling us is the higher regions of the earth are getting hotter more than the equator. That means it's not the sun getting brighter, it's the fact the earth isn't radiating heat. Nowadays, we have scientists tech satellites up and down. The top of our atmosphere is actually getting colder, while the lower atmosphere is getting warmer. Absolutely perfect demonstration, this is man-made climate change. This is not the sun getting brighter. Because if the sun gets brighter, the top of the atmosphere warms up and the bottom. We know we're actually creating more of a greenhouse. Now, energy costs. We pay about £900 for our energy in my house because of energy efficiency. We're careful with our energy. What we should be doing for people in the Neaton and across the rest of the county is making our homes more efficient. That saves money. It has a negative cost to actually make better homes. And this is why it's important that we're building to standard AAA plus, whatever, getting the best homes we can and actually saving our residents' money. Then we, after that, look at renewable energy. The less gas we import to this country, the better price we get for it. Because we make so much of our own gas and we import gas. And gas sets also the price of electricity. So our bills have been so high, mostly our gas bills, because of the price of gas. Nothing to do with net zero makes the price of gas more. The gas market is driven by the price of gas. That's why we need to electrify and insulate as much as possible. Then we come to the electric market and we have contracts for differences. All these wind farms and solar, et cetera.
Anyway, maybe, maybe we'll get him on at some point. I don't know. If you happen to know these councillors, please do, please do let me know. I would love to speak to them. It would be fun, fun to get some, some inside people on, tell us what's going on on Warwickshire council, because I'm sure they have even more stories just about what is going on in Warwickshire. And I would love to hear them. I would love, as I've said before, any councillor out there who sees this and who has like stories about what is going on with like their Reform counterparts and the crazy stories that they're going on, I will gladly get you on here. By all means, get in contact with me. I will gladly get you on here so you can tell, tell the people what's going on. And, you know, we'll have a good laugh as well at the same time. So as always, thank you very much, everyone, for joining me this evening. It has been a good, long stream. But as you can see, we've basically seen Reform UK waste 150k of Warwickshire County Council's budget on political assistance that they just don't need. And their excuse was, well, other councils have them. It's not really a justification, is it? Not really a justification, is it? You're now spending all that extra money. And then they were going, oh, but we have to spend all this stuff on net zero. A few moments ago, you were all fine for like, you know, splurging money, but apparently not now. But anyway, as always, thank you very much for everyone coming to join me this evening. Thank you, everyone who's been in the chat as well, chatting away. Thank you very much to everyone who's been watching as well. Thank you very much to all the people who've been streaming because we are tri-streaming. Most of everyone's been watching through YouTube, so I've been paying most attention to that. But we are also streaming on Twitter and Kick as well, just because, well, why not? Multi-streaming is the way forward, as they say. So thank you very much, everyone, for following, for watching, liking and sharing. Leave a comment down below as well once the stream has ended, it helps out as well. I have other videos that I've just done today as well, so do give those a like, share and a watch as well. It all helps out. And of course, as always, thank you very much for watching and we'll see you all next time.